Township of Precipity Troy Hills, regular meeting. Township Council meeting, January 15, 2013.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the open public meeting law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 10, 2012, where it has remained posted since that date. Illegal notice appear in both the daily record on December 14, 2012, and the Star Ledger on December 13, 2012. It was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio station on December 10, 2012. Note: Council meetings are videotaped and aired on cable Public Access Channel 21 at 1:00 p.m. on Saturdays and are also available for viewing at www.precipitytroy hills.net.
Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Ferrara.
Here.
Mr. Nelson.
Here.
Council President Stanton.
Here. Also present Mayor Barberio, Paula Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator, John Inglisino, Township Attorney, Yancey Wood Ziermas, Township Clerk. Please rise for a flag salute. Mr. Ferrara, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as all.
Upcoming meetings: February 5, 2013, 7:30 p.m., Agenda meeting, public invited, public participation; February 12, 2013, 7:30 p.m., regular meeting, public invited, public participation. We have two things under Mayor's presentations.
Okay.
How about all these invitations? Dylan Joseph. I have your phone, please. Sorry to your late. Don't let go. It's good, all right. First of all, congratulations. Township of Precipity Troy Hills. Michael Mason, as Dylan Joseph McDonald, on as DJ, eighth grader at Central Middle School with an outstanding athletic ability in football, has participated for four years in the PIL A Level Football Program as a middle linebacker and a great guard, and was picked to be their 2012 Defensive Player of the Year. Whereas Dylan McDonald attended the USA National Football Camp, where he was selected for the 2012 Under-15 U.S. National Football Team to represent the United States in Austin, Texas, and serve as an ambassador of the sport of football. And whereas, based upon his performance in Austin, Dylan was further named to be the 2013 USA Under-16 International Football Team that will play in Austin, Texas, on February 1, 2013. And whereas, as a source of pride to the community, to his school, to his peers, Dylan McDonald has embodied those characteristics which have prepared him for the future body instilling in him the values of teamwork, healthy living, discipline, success, hard work, commitment, and sense of fair play. Now therefore, I, James R. Barberio, the Mayor of Township of Precipity Troy Hills, am justly proud to honor Dylan McDonald upon the occasion of his numerous outstanding athletic achievements in football, and do hereby thank him for representing the United States as well as the highest ideals of the PIL A Level Football Program. I further extend congratulations and best wishes for much success at the Paul Catholic High School and on all future endeavors. Aided this 15th day of January 2013. Dylan? Not only that, I want to thank you for keeping the pride of Precipity alive and alive, Dylan. Thank you, gentlemen. Congratulations. I don't have the coaches come up for the 2012 USL Super Wide League North American Finals. On the Dave Ferguson, the President, can come up as well? League representative, Robert Firth? I don't know if you guys are here.
He's traveling.
Al Zoloski, Coach Stanley Hellbrack?
Uh-huh.
Coach, keeper, coach, goalkeeper, Coach John Seattle is here. All right, and team manager, C.C. Wong? I don't know this guy.
How are you?
Good, man, thanks, by the way.
Ladies and gentlemen, I tell you, the Precipity Soccer Club, for the first time ever, am I correct?
I was just...
First time.
First time.
First time.
Won the national championship.
Congratulations.
I'm going to call each one of yous. I have his certificates, and I'm going to read them out. The Township of Precipity Troy Hills Outstanding Achievement Award presented to Frank Cianci, Defender Precipity Soccer Club Gators U-17B, for an outstanding season and for winning the USL Super Wide League North American Championship. Come on up. Frank? Thank you. Clayton Flan? Is Clayton here? What's that, Clayton? First of all, congratulations. I was never good at soccer because you have to run. Sebastian Gallo? Congratulations, Sebastian. Jonathan Meyer? Congratulations, Jonathan. Kelvin Hasuán? Was I good at it? Did I do it right? That was good. Congratulations. Andrew Ruane? Congratulations, Andrew. Christopher Ugarte? Christopher, congratulations. Joshua Bolson? Congratulations, Joshua. Ryan Viskasal? Not bad. Zachary Adler? Zachary, congratulations. Jacob Golabek? Congratulations. Jack Isla? Is that here? Okay. William Johnston? Congratulations, William. Chase LeBeau? That sounds like a soccer name for some reason. Matthew Villano? Matthew, congratulations. Mike Weston? Congratulations, Mike. Jay Chong Wong? Jay, congratulations. And C.C. Wong? You get one, too? John Seattle? All right. And Stanley Dubrick Jr.? First of all, I want to congratulate you. That's outstanding. National champions. You know, that's not something that happens every year. Growing up in the town, I never got to even out of the little leagues. But I congratulate you. But we're going to do one thing. We're going to go out into the parking lot, we're going to race the mayor. And you're probably going to win. So, there you go. Congratulations again. Thank you.
Hold on for two minutes.
I actually... You want my glass?
They beat me to the bottom.
Are you all?
Why?
You're a bitch. Oh, here it is. Be right back.
Where you going?
Excuse us, I'll be back.
We're going to go forward.
I'm sorry. Just here now.
Okay.
Oh, it's a problem. I can't do it. They're in here. And then hold off. All right?
Well, you're going to tell him that because he may be in there for a while.
I know. We're going to have to wear someone will have to knock when we enter that. We have a few minutes. Because we...
Bids, bids to be taken. January 31, 2013, 10:00 a.m., FEMA House Elevation Project, Phase One. January 31, 2013, 11:00 a.m., 2012 FEMA Acquisition Demolition Project, Phase One. Ordinance is second read in public hearing. Ordinance 2012, colon 49, Mr. DePiero.
An ordinance amending Section 285-4, Schedule A, no parking, fire zones of Article 1 of Chapter 285, parking of the code of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills to establish fire zones and regulate parking at 819 Edwards Road Block 767, Lot 14. Motion to accept.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Ferrara. All in favor? Anyone opposed? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open this up to the public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. DePiero.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I'll open up this motion, this motion only, to the public. Seeing no one come forward, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Krefi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferrara. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. DePiero.
Whereas above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Ferrara. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open this up to a public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Krefi. At this time, I'm opening this up to the public. You'll be given five minutes to speak on any subject.
Are you coming?
Yeah, it comes, Joe.
Joe, I'm going to count that as you're coming up.
Thought there would be more people.
I'm here.
I'm rising to discuss with you the last time that I had come before the open session and wanted to go over the recommendations by your environmental committee. Mrs. McCloskey is the chairperson of that committee, and I discussed with her that these recommendations were made on February 14 of 2012. And most of the four proposals have already been enacted, dealing with dredging and dealing with the 911 emergency calls, the reverse 911 system. The one out of the five that still hasn't been resolved, I spoke with Mr. Lisa Liza on, an engineering, in reference to the retaining wall that the water went over the top during Hurricane Irene, which was in August, late August of 2011, of which nothing has been resolved by this council and township to go and make the situation better for the Lake Hiawatha residents. Mr. Lisa mentioned that the Army Corps of Engineers took some facts and figures and has been waiting for the possibility of a follow-up from this council, from the mayor, to find out exactly what could be done for that retaining wall unless you've already been instructed and made a decision upon the retaining wall and how to go and work about Hurricane Irene to make things better for the next, God forbid, disaster that will be coming down the weatherman's pike. Has anything been done about the retaining wall as to your knowledge?
He was asking if Justin's been doing anything with the retaining wall.
Justin's been in touch with the DEP in regards to the retaining wall, and they have done a study on it. I don't know how extensive the study is, but as Councilman DePiero said, was it the last meeting? In regards to it, we don't have it as of right now. We are looking into what the DEP is going to recommend, if we recommend anything, but the fact is that the retaining wall is being addressed. We've done, you know, like I said, we've done studies on it through the DEP, but, you know, I can't give you an answer if we're going to heighten it or lower it, but that would have to be approved through the council anyway.
I believe the Army Corps of Engineers has been involved with investigating also.
The what engineers?
The Army Corps of Engineers.
That I don't know if they've been...
The federal government?
I know it's the federal government, but the DEP and all that, we've been in touch with them. We had, in fact, if I'm correct, we hired an engineering firm to actually look at the wall.
He did mention that.
O'Brien, I think that's the name of the engineering firm.
And has any, anything come from that?
I will find out for you, Mr. Raish.
I would appreciate it.
No problem.
It's been a long time, and we need to get some confidence that we're not going to be inundated again as a one-time thing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Joe, could you just state your name and address for the record?
Oh, Joe Raish, A. Wolf Place, Precipity.
Thank you. Next.
Next.
The Mayor and Council, this is for the public.
Yes.
Yes.
Please sign your name and address.
Yep. This is a resolution proposal to the Precipity Troy Hill Council. 2013 is the 150th anniversary of the Emancipation... Trying to be like Oprah. 2013 is the 150th anniversary of the Emancipation Proclamation. And of a bit of a background, I'm quoting from the 44th U.S. President Barack Hussein Obama, and I quote, "Yet even in those dark days, light persisted, hope endured, as the weariness of an old year gave way to the promise of a new one." President Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, courageously declaring that on January 1, 1863, "All persons held as slaves in the rebellious areas shall be then, henceforward, and forever free." He opened the Union Army and Navy to African-Americans, giving new strength to liberty's cause. And with that document, President Lincoln lent new moral force to the U.S. Civil War, the worst war in American history, on our own soil. By making it a fight not just to preserve, but also to empower, he sought to reunite our people, not only in government, but also in freedom, that knew no bounds of color or creed. Every battle became a battle for liberty itself. Every struggle became a struggle for equality." The proposed resolution. Precipity Hill Council issue a resolution on the 150th anniversary of the Emancipation Proclamation at the next council meeting, February 12, 2013, the 204th birthday of Abraham Lincoln, the 16th President of the United States, the first Republican President, and the greatest U.S. President to date. The township resolution should encourage public statements by township residents and students on the impact of the Emancipation Proclamation on the United States of America and certainly also Precipity Town Hill. Closing statement. The 1863 Emancipation Proclamation is a correction to and affirmation of the world's greatest document on liberty, the U.S. Constitution of 1787. The Precipity Troy Hill Elected Council Resolution on the 1863 Emancipation Proclamation would be an affirmation of freedom and equality for all residents of the great township of Precipity Troy Hill, New Jersey. And I'm making this proposal as a member of the NACP, the Washington Association of New Jersey, North Jersey Civil War Roundtable, North Jersey American Revolutionary War Roundtable, New Jersey Civil War 150th Committee, World War II Book Club, and Widener University, which I am the historian for the African-American Alumni Association. And I present it with honor that we are here tonight in a free America, that we can make proposals and councils can review them, reject it or approve it. But I might note that this proposal is not only for the Emancipation Proclamation, but it's also for Abraham Lincoln, our greatest president, and it's also for the people of the township, and more important, the young people and students. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowden, did you see the movie Lincoln?
The NACP, we're making arrangements on the 26th to be at the Morris Town Clearview to see the movie and also have a discussion.
It's a great movie. It's worth seeing. It's great.
I've heard the statement.
It's great.
Okay.
I loved every moment of the movie.
And I will certainly make that statement to the New Jersey NACP because they were looking for some encouragement.
Great movie. You will enjoy it.
Okay. Any additional questions?
Mr. Council President, Mr. Bowen, thank you for your remarks.
Okay.
I can only speak for myself, but be reassured that a resolution will be coming. And if it's not on the next agenda, it will be coming shortly. I think it would be a good idea to contact the schools to get some students in here for...
Certainly.
You know, when it does come up. But, thank you.
And if I can be of any assistance in making up that resolution, let me know.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
See no one else come forward, I'll entertain a motion to close the public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. DePiero, second by Mr. Ferrara. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Consent agenda. Be resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine, non-controversial by Township Council, be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless the council members' request, which case the item be removed from the consent agenda, considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Before we go forward with the ordinances, Mr. Nelson, would you like to...
Yes. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mike Banco to the Transparency Committee.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Krefi. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. President, I also like to nominate Adriana Afonso to the Transparency Committee.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Ferrara. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Ordinances. Ordinance 2013, colon, 01. Mr. Ferrara.
Ordinance 2013, colon, 01. An ordinance of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills in the County of Morris, New Jersey, setting Township Council general rules of procedure. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at the meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, held on January 15, 2013, and said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at the meeting to be held on February 12, 2013, at 7:30 p.m., prevailing time or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction, thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. Ferrara.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Ordinance 2013, colon, 02. Mr. Krefi.
Ordinance 2013, colon, 02. An ordinance of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills in the County of Morris, New Jersey, proving restrictions on maximum occupancy of residential units. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, held on January 15, 2013, and that the said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on February 12, 2013, at 7:30 p.m., prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction, thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Second.
Motion by Mr. Krefi, second by Mr. Ferrara. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Ordinance 2013, colon, 03. Mr. Nelson.
An ordinance amending ordinance 2012, colon, 23, entitled, An Ordinance Establishing White Collar Salary ranges for the Township of Precipity Troy Hills. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction, thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Second. Motion by Mr. Krefi, second by Mr. Ferrara. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Mr. Nelson.
Mr. President, I also like to nominate Adriana Afonso to the Transparency Committee.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Ferrara. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Ordinances. Ordinance 2013, colon, 01. Mr. Ferrara.
Ordinance 2013, colon, 01. An ordinance of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills in the County of Morris, New Jersey, setting Township Council general rules of procedure. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at the meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, held on January 15, 2013, and said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at the meeting to be held on February 12, 2013, at 7:30 p.m., prevailing time or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction, thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. Ferrara.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Ordinance 2013, colon, 02. Mr. Krefi.
Ordinance 2013, colon, 02. An ordinance of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills in the County of Morris, New Jersey, proving restrictions on maximum occupancy of residential units. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, held on January 15, 2013, and that the said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on February 12, 2013, at 7:30 p.m., prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction, thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Second.
Motion by Mr. Krefi, second by Mr. Ferrara. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Mr. President, I also like to nominate Adriana Afonso to the Transparency Committee.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Ferrara. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Adriana Afonso to the Transparency Committee.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Ferrara, roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinances. Ordinance 2013, colon, 01. An ordinance of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills in the county of Morris, state of New Jersey, setting township council general rules of procedure. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at the meeting of the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on January 15, 2013, and said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on February 12, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion by Mr. Ferrara?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson, roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance 2013, colon, 04, Mr. DiPiero.
An ordinance of the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, county of Morris, state of New Jersey, authorizing a license agreement between the township of Parsippany Troy Hills and Parsippany Soccer Club, Inc. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on first reading at a meeting of the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on January 15, 2013, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on February 12, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. prevailing time or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance.
Got to read the...
Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion by Mr. DiPiero, second by Mr. Ferrara, roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Add-on resolution, R. 2013-029, Mr. Ferrara.
Resolution of the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, confirming the appointment and authorizing the award of a contract for professional service with Todd M. Galanti Esquire as special legal counsel.
Motion by Mr. Ferrara?
Second.
Second by Mr. DiPiero, roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Add-on, R. 2013-030, Mr. Creefy.
A resolution of the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, directing the township planning board to determine whether certain property within the township should be declared in area in need of rehabilitation in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Local Redevelopment and Housing Law.
Motion by Mr. Creefy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferrara, roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Mr. Nelson?
Mr. Council President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add Resolution 2013-31.
Motion by Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Creefy, roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Mr. Nelson, please.
Resolution 2013-31 is a resolution authorizing the 2012 budget appropriation transfers, three. Whereas NJS 40A, colon, 4-59 provides that all unexpended balances carried forward after the close of the year are available until lapsed at the close of the succeeding year to meet specific claims, commitments, or contracts incurred during the preceding fiscal year, and allow transfers to be made from unexpended balances which are expected to be insufficient during the first three months of the succeeding year. Now therefore be it resolved by the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills that transfers in the amount of $77,000 be made between the 2012 budget of appropriation reserves as follows. Current fund, solid waste disposal costs of $50,000, gasoline of $27,000, and we're going to move that to liability insurance for garbage and trash removal to $26,000. Other expenses, $50,000 is that? And Fire Prevention Bureau, $1,000.
Motion by Mr. Nelson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferrara, roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. DiPiero?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferrara, roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Add-on resolution, R. 2013-030, Mr. Ferrara.
Resolution of the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, confirming the appointment and authorizing the award of a contract for professional service with Todd M. Galanti Esquire as special legal counsel.
Motion by Mr. Ferrara?
Second.
Second by Mr. DiPiero, roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Add-on, R. 2013-030, Mr. Creefy.
A resolution of the township council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, directing the township planning board to determine whether certain property within the township should be declared in area in need of rehabilitation in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Local Redevelopment and Housing Law.
Motion by Mr. Creefy?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferrara, roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Mr. Nelson?
Mr. Council President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add Resolution 2013-31.
Motion by Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Creefy, roll call.
Mr. Creefy?
Yes.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Mr. Nelson, please.
Resolution 2013-31 is a resolution authorizing the 2012 budget appropriation transfers, three.